Seven P M. Will everybody rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Before we adopt the agenda, I did want to nominate. We're having issues, as we all know, with some big backlog on minutes. I wanted to nominate Faye Kennedy as the Secretary of Pro Tem for tonight's meeting to take our minutes. Faye has graciously, you know, volunteered her time, so I'm gonna nominate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Those would be subject to review by the Clerk Tronker?
Most definitely. Yeah, yeah. She's gonna take them and then work with Mary and then we'll get her copies and approve. Or changes needed. Any other questions? Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at the agenda for tonight's meeting. We have small business and some new business. Any, any changes would like to be made, any additions? Please let me know.
I have a couple of changes, requests. I'd like to request we postpone to an indefinite date and time, item number one, under new business, which is the reviewers getting on the reviews.
Okay, so take off scheduled closed meeting for reviews.
Correct.
Okay.
And then I would like to request, let me check this one. Yes, I would like to request that we have a public forum placed on tonight's agenda.
I know in the past with other councils, the other council, which doesn't play a role here, they haven't. I, I have no objection to open, an open forum. I do wanna make sure that we follow maximum of three minutes for those that wish to speak, just to keep, keep our meeting moving. Does anybody have any discussion or any issues with that?
I do, yeah. And I understand the previous council had, had a position on that as well, which I, I concur with. I just don't, I think it's unfair and not in the best interest of all our citizens to amend the council agenda once it's been posted. Adding to the agenda after posting doesn't give our citizens the opportunity to be fully engaged in whatever the subject matter is that's proposed to be added, because they've already made, may have made the decision not to attend based on the published agenda. In addition, it does not provide the council with the ability to perform due diligence on the topic which is proposed to be added, and I'm talking any religious to the agenda, whatever they may be, public forums, new or amended agenda topics. I would recommend, however, that unless there's a topic or matter that is time-sensitive and could pose a risk to the city if it were not acted upon, the agenda should be amended in that latter case. In this specific case, the city has had a long history of having public comment at the first meeting of every month. That's what our citizenry is familiar with and accustomed to. I'm all for public input and I encourage it, but I also believe in consistency of practice. Without that consistency, we risk damaging the council's integrity and transparency, along with losing the confidence of our citizens. So I would oppose amending the agenda to me.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are there any more?
No, just that, you know, when an agenda is posted, you know, any additions or subtractions must be submitted before noon on Wednesday. So, you know, and like Tim says, any changes to that doesn't give us time to really study the package. I understand also that the people wanna be heard, but, you know, it's appreciative if they come to the council with positive comments on the city, on our job as a city council. We're doing our best to get the city, you know, back in business here, so. And also, the comments should be limited to three minutes.
Okay. Troy, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I think we had Rich Smith speak to us the second January meeting. I think we had a public forum at that point. Or at least I do know Richard Smith was able to talk. I'm just gonna keep this short, I guess. I, I am never going to get in the way or go on the record of obstructing or denying the people of this city to say whatever it is they have to say to me or the rest of the council. So I am completely in favor and that's why I ask that it be added to the agenda, that we have a public forum available to our citizens at every one of our meetings, including tonight.
I, could I just say too, this isn't just my, what I say, it weren't just my thoughts I've heard from other citizens in the community. And I'm not against a public forum at each meeting. I think adding it at the last minute is not fair. Again, I encourage public comment. I mean, that's what we're all here for. But it gets a little out of sync when you start adding things to the agenda every single meeting. And it's not fair to the citizens who want, want transparency from us. And I think it's, it, it kind of reeks of, I'm gonna pull one over. I mean, that's what I feel when people are adding agenda items at the last minute. It gives none of us any opportunity to vet whatsoever. And like I said, I've had citizens who say, you know, you added, I wasn't coming to the meeting and you added that agenda. Now, I wasn't there, I didn't have an opportunity. I would have spoken had I known. So that's my position and I kinda take umbrage to the characterization that I'm not for public comment, because I am, and I suspect all the council members are. So if that's what you're intimating, Councilmember Anderson, I would like an apology.
No, no. No, you, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I might give you an apology for that. You, if you choose to take this personally, you can. I don't take this personally. This is public service to me. That, that is my obligation to listen to the people if they have something to say. The other thing that is my obligation, and as far as me providing due diligence, is me getting the information on time, days ahead of a meeting. I came in again tonight, there was another stack of papers.
Could I, could I?
No, actually, you can't.
That's not the agenda item that we're taking up?
That's, that is the agenda, because I'm talking about the whole agenda. I'm talking about representing the people of this city. Okay? And I have a responsibility to do that, not only a fiduciary responsibility as far as the money goes, the check registers, the cash funds, all the budget information, the payroll. All of these things are important for me to do what I'm supposed to do in representing the people. And one of the most important things I can do is listen to them when they wanna talk to me. And that doesn't, that doesn't matter if it's out on the street. It doesn't matter if they give me a phone call. And certainly, if they have the, the determination to show up tonight and speak to me, I, I am going to listen to them and I'm never gonna obstruct their ability to do that. There is, there are a couple of things from the standard operating procedures and the way we always used to do things that don't lend themselves to us fulfilling our vocations the way we should. And I think the sooner this council can turn that around and be open to hear other people's comments, especially the citizens, the people that voted for us, the people whose tax money we're spending, should be able to speak to us at any time, especially at a meeting.
I think you might have used up everybody's three minutes, Troy, but thank you.
All right, we don't need to make any comments. Let's bring it to a vote right now. There is, adding open forum to the agenda was what was discussed. I will like to call up to the vote. All those in favor?
We need a motion, first and second.
Well, e-motion, right.
Vote traded.
So I second the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two and two, Mary.
Could I make a friendly amendment?
No, we're done. We're gonna move on. Is there anything else that anybody would like to add to the agenda for tonight?
Brandon, were you a yank?
Yes. Was there anything else anybody would like to add?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify one point, I think the first issue that was addressed was a motion to postpone indefinitely item number one, new business, and there was no action taken. My understanding was is that there was, there was minutes to reflect a consensus on that, if you don't wanna take a vote on that. But otherwise, I would suggest that you indicate that in a vote, given what's involved.
Okay.
Could I also clarify? So I thought the motion that Troy did was to add the public forum. That was the only thing to add to it. So anything else on there would stay unless otherwise changed, correct?
Right. Yes, he's saying that we should have a vote, we should motion and vote to take off scheduled closed meeting is what
Okay, correct.
The city attorney is asking us to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Do I have a motion to take the closed meeting review of the agenda for tonight for the full-time city employees?
Yeah, if I can just clarify the scheduling, which is taking off the scheduling of a closed meeting review. That was, that was the agenda.
Yeah, the scheduled closed meeting of full-time.
And if I could postpone it to an indefinite time, or at least, like I said, take it off the agenda for tonight, yes, that, and that would be my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second to remove that from new business? Clarification. If we don't have a second, then it stays on the agenda for tonight?
That would be correct. Motion fail.
Okay.
Can I, can I make some more comments on it?
Does anybody else have any comments on the scheduled closed meeting to be removed or not? And we didn't, anybody want a second? I'll second it to remove the scheduled closed meeting of full-time city employee performance evaluation. All those in favor removing it for tonight's?
Can I make comments on it at this point, or after it's been seconded?
Yeah.
That's discussion, right. Yeah, we don't have a council member here. We don't have a council member. And I'm not familiar with this schedule. I don't know what he would, what he would do. I don't know what his schedule is. I'm not gonna assume to know what his schedule is. So that was, that's my reasoning for it. I think, I think we should have full representation when we're gonna schedule anything for any of our employees. We should have all our council members here, whether it's scheduling a review or hiring a employee for that matter. So that's my, that's my position on it.
No? All right. Well, let's bring it to a vote to remove the scheduled closed meeting for a full-time city staff performance evaluation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
It fails, Mary, two and two. Is there any other new business that we wanna amend? Add, we did have the Lions Club protest today that would like to add the request for a gambling license for an upcoming bingo night. I would like to add that for number four, if we can, for new business.
I assume that'll be time-sensitive.
Yes, yes. They asked if we could get it done as quickly as possible. I believe it is for, if that didn't end in a month, am I correct, Mary?
March 31st.
March 31st, okay. All right, so I'll motion to add that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. We'll, we'll add the Lions Club gambling license for upcoming bingo on March 31st. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Anything else that anybody wanted to add or amend?
Not yet.
All right.
I do have some things for the consent agenda. I would like something pulled off of that when we get to that vote right now. We've missed that a couple of times, so I wanted to bring that up.
All right, so we're gonna adopt our old business and new business agenda. We'll move into the consent agenda now.
We didn't do the full agenda. We just, we just did the pieces of it. So we need to adopt, we need to move for the agenda with either the changes, the adding or the bingo, but nothing else. Good three moves.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the one addition that we added.
I would second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, now let's move on to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Please give us your discussion.
Okay, yes, thank you. One question I have is the approval of minutes from previous meeting. Is that part of the consent agenda or is that now separate? I notice it's not italicized and there's no asterisk by it. It seems to be changing. So that would mean that's a separate agenda item completely and not be included in the consent agenda, is my guess. Just a clarification on that.
I can speak. I think I forgot the asterisk and the early minutes.
Okay, so that means that the approval of previous minutes of previous meeting is included in the consent agenda for tonight's vote. Since we have no meeting minutes, we have none tonight, we have had none for this full year. We have very sparse minutes for 2022. On that issue right there, I will be in opposition to the consent agenda. And then I have some other issues with the consent agenda as well, if I may. Please go to those at this time. We're gonna be approving payments, payroll claims. I have some concerns. Well, first of all, let's go to the checklist if I might. I'm getting there. Thank you for everybody's patience. Check number 32584 is Menards Cap 1. The fund number is 42260. It's under wages and salaries for fuel. I'm, I'm a little confused, I guess. That check number for every other entry in the checklist is for motor fuels, taking on the fuel. This one, for some reason, is taken on wages and salaries. I was wondering, explanation for that is for $40.68.
I would believe that's an error. It should be either motor fuels or repairs and maintenance machines. I will look at that. Thank you for touching that.
My next concern would be with the fund cash balances, which I, I'm also assuming is part of the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We have, right now, for our general fund balance, we have a current balance of negative $10135. I'm curious as to how we can really, well, first of all, that's the number we're reporting to the people of Taylor's Falls. That's what we're telling them how much we have. How can we approve any payments when we have a general fund in the negative $10135?
Did you wanna go each of these? Did you wanna go through your list or speak to each of them as we go?
I'll do one more. I'll do one more, sure. City Buildings and Debt Service Fund is a negative $140,768. Again, I'm wondering how we can write any checks with any confidence when we have negative fund balances in the, in the six digits for that, for both of those funds. There's, there's some others there. The Debt Service Fund is negative $17,000. Street Improvements, negative $66,168. My other concern, since I'm about to just keep going in the interest of time, our expenditure budget report, I'm showing in account number 41540. This is the auditing and accounting services. We have, we are now 104% over our limit. We have a year-to-date amount of $19,418. I'm sorry, we had a budgeted amount of $18,600. We've spent $19,418. We are in the red, negative $818. That puts us over our budget for auditing and accounting services by 104%. My next concern would be the council, Description Council. This is just training and instruction, basically. We budgeted $500. We have currently spent $700 and I think that $700 would be two training fees. Is that correct, Mary? Instructional services?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
At $350 each, and I haven't been reimbursed for mine yet. So we're actually gonna be $1,050. Right now, we are at a negative $200 in training and instruction budget, which puts us over our budget. We're at 140%, so we're 40% over our budget already. It's February.
Almost March.
Could I, I could comment, Troy, I'm sorry, are you done?
I can be for now, sure. Thank you. Thanks for the time.
I, I share some of your thoughts and concerns. And I just attended the newly elected officials' training that the Minnesota Cities put on. And my comment to that group was it seems like the way government is accounted for is made to make things complicated and almost impossible to understand. So just an overall comment, I would love for the council and to have it at an open meeting to have a, a training Q and A session with our accounting firm so that we could really learn how this works. As you'll see when you go to your trainings, it's fairly high level. It would be really nice to work off a budget, off an expense sheet, and understand how things are done. My understanding is we get our, our local government aid and our property tax revenues in December and July. And those are 50% payments and our fund balances are supposed to support ongoing operations until we get the next checks, correct? That's where I was a little confused with this. And I was assuming the fund balances are there if you look at the last, I think the last couple of pages, it shows it, it's a different picture. So I don't know if Mary can speak to that or not, but I really think the council needs some education. I know, I, I'll speak for myself. I need some education around it. Regarding the auditing service, I have a similar question. And my question would be, is this typically a first-quarter expense with the end of year and auditing for the prior year, or is this an ongoing expense?
So two things. The additional auditing service was not budgeted and it never has been budgeted. That was called my attention towards the end when we knew we needed additional help. So that was never put in the budget and has not been put in the budget. That is one of the main reasons why we're over. So.
Were these invoices reflective of some 2022 expenses as well?
So never, the other thing is 22 audit is not complete. There's still journal entries, things that need to be done. Buckets need to be moved from payments made in '23 to payments that were made in '22. And Brad will explain all of that when he comes in with the auditing information. So he does explain all that to you when he comes in, and I believe he'll be in in March. I just don't know the date.
So if you look at the, the fund cash balance sheet and then you go to the next page and it's the revenue budget report, the general fund in the revenue budget report shows us as a positive fund numbers. And I saw that right away, but why? And I wrote, I reached out to Brad and I copied Mary on it because, and this was from the last one, because we were $96,000 negative, and I'm like, well, holy smokes, I'm writing checks. You know, this isn't right. And he, I, I don't, until he comes up here, he did, I, I understood what he was saying, that he caught issues and he made changes in the software, is what I gathered, on how things have been done in the past. But he didn't elaborate. Can you, I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Mary, but you're the one that knows. I mean, you're doing this, so what, what, I mean, what is he changing? Why don't these reflect? Because if we really do have $739,000, then this, I mean, this is, if that's not right, the rest of the sheet's garbage.
Yeah. I don't know what he's caught because he hasn't shared that with me. And a lot of that stuff was done prior to me getting here and so I don't know. But that's what the auditor does, goes through all of the things. I know there was funds for salaries that were supposed to be transferred from the water and sewer fund over into the public works for wages and salaries. That had not been completed, so he'll be making those changes as well. I don't know how it affects those bottom lines under the general fund. So it'll come out of sewer water and it will go into the general fund for wages, but I don't know how it affects the current balance.
And I agree. It leaves you wondering, should I be nervous or not?
Yeah, well, I got more checks to sign, Dick, so I mean, I just, and I didn't sign them until tonight, so if there is any questions, you know, we have them right here. But it just, I put two and two together, it doesn't make sense to me. But one sheet says that we have money, one sheet says we don't, and so.
It was kinda similar at the training. Not to make light of it, but it, it is confusing.
Do we know why we're so negative on the city buildings?
That's part of the loans. That's part of the loans that are still up.
For this going over right now?
Yep, until, I believe, 2028, I think. Yeah. It's all part of the debt service, so I believe there's two of them out there.
And if I could, in addition to what Troy had mentioned, the contracted police services, I believe that one year-to-date number of 32 to 35 is the same number as last month. And I'm just curious, Troy, maybe you're the, you're the liaison with the Sheriff's Department. How are we paying that? Is it quarterly, monthly? Are we paying in advance for services? Do we pay, you know, invoice every month? And the reason I'm asking, I was wondering, I'm used to accrual-based financing and I was worried that we were paying 2022 invoicing in 2023.
That's what we've been doing with a lot of our audit. We can go over the invoices. We are actually, this council actually approved a payment for a late payment for 2021 that was due in June of 2022 and was brought to this council for approval in January of 2023 and we paid it. And I know, I appreciate everything all of you are saying on this. You haven't given me enough confidence to, with, with this report, to feel I'm making a responsible decision on part of the taxpayers. If, if this isn't right, then why is it the information we're showing it to the people? Why is this the information we're showing to the people? I mean, if, if we're getting property taxes in the middle of this year, a negative $100,000 balance in the general fund just tells me that it wasn't budgeted for. Because we shouldn't have a negative $100,000 balance in a budget, in a balance for a budget if, you know, if, if that money wasn't budgeted for. This, this budget isn't for the first couple of months of 2023. This is for the full year. And like I said, it's February. I won't take any more time here. I just, I just, I don't have confidence that, that we have the money to pay the bills with these reports and reports we're getting. So I am, I'm gonna be opposed to the consent agenda based on that. And I understand that, that what I'm saying there is that hypothetically, if that went through, people wouldn't get their money. But until, I can honestly tell you how much money we have in all of our funds. I think we need to find out who's responsible for that, why we can't get this information to the people. All of us up here have a responsibility to make sure we can make decisions. And to make those decisions, we have to have accurate information. And if I don't have accurate information, if I don't have it in time, I can't make those decisions with a clear conscience and I will love no, from here going forward, but.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question? So the, the check, the, the first piece there, the checklist, are those already in paid?
They're waiting for it.
They're ready.
Okay, those are the ones that you're waiting for.
Yep.
Those are the ones that you're waiting for, right?
Mary, it, it does worry me that it says negative a hundred thousand. Do all our checks, I mean, when it says general fund, all our checks come out of that general fund, right? When we write it, that's the, is that linked to the checking account balance?
It is, unless it's, unless it's marked for sewer or water, then that comes out a different one. Yeah, most of them all come out of the debt service. Or debt service, yeah.
So.
And you can see the.
Is this an entry problem? I mean, because if I look month-to-date, I look year-to-date and then I look at year-to-date credits, if you add those up, it should be positive if I'm.
You know what, I, I don't know how to answer that because I just run the report and I was hoping Brad would explain it more to when he gets here. So I, I don't know how to answer. I do know if I look at the bottom line, at the bottom of that page, there is money, we're not in the hole. It's after the audit, that number at the top of the general fund will change. I don't know if it goes up, down, but after the audit, it will be whatever it is.
That's what gave me some confidence in, in addition to the, I think, the last sheet in the packet for, for budget-related things too. It does show a positive eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar one eighty-two balance. But you're, you're right, Troy, the, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It's hard to, to understand what is going on. And Mary, you can't manipulate this report.
No.
It's what's in the system, correct?
Does this, I hate to stray off topic, but we had a conversation earlier today when I came up before, before a meeting and you shared with me some frustrations on our Banyan system, I mean.
I don't, no, I don't, so maybe the way the reports are run and how they're shown, there would be a difference. It's however you key them in. So that one that Troy called out was keyed in under wages, but that's what, it's so important to put comments in there so you know what it really is for. So he caught that, so now I want to change it and it'll only be changed by forty dollars. It'll just, so.
So it'll go to the motor fuels instead of the wages?
Right.
And in the future, I would assume that the superintendent of public works would catch that or would have, he would have coded that himself, right?
Right, and then it's me keying it in.
Okay.
So it looks like it'll be fuel for the fire department because it's coded under that four, four, two, six, zero. That is the fire department code?
This is not a motion, just a suggestion, but maybe we just wait to pay all checks until Brad gets here to explain this to us.
You could, but if you don't pay the Menards, they'll shut it off and the fire trucks and public works who are calling will not be able to fuel their trucks. So that's an option.
I'm guessing, curious, who would be responsible then?
The council.
Oh, we would? For just approving it, just approving it without having all the knowledge that we need. I've got another question about payroll. We don't have any hour breakdown here in the paid register, we just have the check amount. So shouldn't we have regular hours, overtime hours? Shouldn't that be laid out so that people know what their money pays for?
I believe that was something that was gonna be under discussion with Fritz on what exactly needs to be public. I know that salaries and the dollar amounts, yes, but when it came to personal, the time offs and things like that, we weren't sure. And that was something that was gonna be discussed.
Okay, well, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Fritz, but I, I can understand the time off, we don't know, you know, if it's a medical thing, that's something that certainly shouldn't be discussed. But you, you, you mentioned hours, those aren't on this paid register?
I've never put hours on before. I don't know what they did after I was gone. I'm just questioning whether the whole hour, all that information is correct. I don't know and that was a question we were gonna have for Fritz.
So that.
Correct. Wages, what we pay them is absolutely public knowledge, I don't know what the other part is.
Well, we pay them per hour, it's public knowledge.
Yeah, that's what she said, hourly, it's public. Well, what do you think, Fritz, what would you add?
You know, as I'm looking at this thing, if you've got a reporting system that does give you confidence in the numbers, you've got a problem. And, you know, I think ultimately, when I was looking at this thing, you've also got a balance. But, you know, I'm not an accountant and I don't play on TV, so you've got somebody that, that, that has that and I'm gonna suggest that you prioritize for him a explanation of these numbers and if the problem's in the system, you know, maybe change the system or at least have him do the modifications necessary. I'm assuming that somebody that is an auditor would be able to offer that advice and suggestion to you. Because if you're looking at this information and you're confused and there's no one here that can provide you with an explanation, you have a responsibility to the public, you know, to in good faith know what's going on. If you can take it on faith that there's a balance in there somewhere, that you've got a checking account balance, presumably you do, that you can rely on. But I would suggest that this would be a matter of some urgency with the individual that you rely on to consult and say, look, you know, all, these are numbers.